I like that.
We are all here. So I would like to open the meeting. Dave, are you streaming?
I just started it. So it should be live now on Town Hall Streams and I see that I believe it's Russ has made it on YouTube as well. So we should be good with that.
Great. So I would like to open the meeting at 6:31 and we'll, we can start with a pledge allegiance. So Dana has the flag. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's take a brief roll call. Dave? And Dee?
Here.
Great. Chris, here. Okay. First on our list is Mark. And so Mark, I, I see that you're here, but you're, there you are. Great. You're muted, I think, though.
Yeah. So I don't know whether we want Mark or Russ to start this and then I'm sure we'll have questions for Mark.
So this was, to recap, I wasn't able to answer some of your questions about the Loma request for Frost Lane. So I asked Mark if he could come in and Mark agreed. So he's here to answer your questions. So I'll hand it over to him.
Okay, thanks. My name's Mark Moser. I'm a professional engineer and this is part of the process where we make sure that a proposed building is in compliance with the federal requirements and your floodplain ordinance. And that it is built at the proper elevation and not within the 100-year floodplain. So this is really part of your floodplain ordinance. And the community acknowledgement form is one piece of the information that gets submitted to FEMA, who goes over all the data and the requests and either approves it or denies it. So if you have any specific questions or I can, I can share a screen and show you what it is we're trying to do on the ground and share the floodplain maps with you, whatever you'd like to see, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think it would be a great idea. Oh my God, there's a, looks like a coyote there. If you could share the map of what you're trying to accomplish, because I do have a question and it might be easier if there was a map up there.
Okay.
Should be able to share, Mark.
Thanks. So does everybody know where this is?
I've, I've been down Frost Lane about five times looking for this place and I can't find it.
Yeah, it's tough. If you go all the way to the end and you stay to the left, there's a house at the very end with a, I think it's a, there's a gate that crosses the driveway.
Yeah.
It's just before that on the right.
Oh.
So that's where it is right there.
Is that, is that Juniper Lane?
No, that's Frost Lane.
Okay. So it's before you get to Juniper Lane?
It's at, it's after.
After Juniper Lane? On the?
On the right.
On the right. Okay. Okay, that's helpful.
And I, if you want to see photos, I can do that too.
So what is the size of the lot?
12,000 square feet. This is the existing conditions plan. Here's the boundary. This is the Blackwater River and the flow direction is to the left. These are your building setbacks right here. And here's, you know, here's Frost Lane coming in. It's just a 12-foot gravel driveway right now. And then here's the layout for a garage and a house within the building setbacks. And we're going to be raising the ground for a driveway and about 20 feet off of the buildings, about, well, six feet in the front of the house. And then, you know, bring the elevation up back out to Frost Lane. So I hired a land surveyor to bring the proper elevation datum over to the site and we established where FEMA's floodplain is in relation to the buildings and came up with the two elevations for the garage and the house. And the, the requirements are that the, the lowest adjacent grade to the building is at or above the 100-year floodplain. So we have proposed lowest adjacent grades to the building around the garage and the house.
And, and the fill that will be required to accomplish that is what, about 11, 11,000 square feet?
Um, the area, um, yeah, I mean, that's, it's not quite that much because that's the entire disturbed area. Um, the fill might be closer to 9,000 square feet. But yeah, that's, that's in the ballpark.
Okay.
And the fill's basically here.
So they'll, they'll be living essentially on a, on a floodplain island?
That's correct.
Okay.
These are the rules and I don't know if this has ever flooded back here. But FEMA establishes the elevations based on a hydraulic analysis of the river and this is what we have to live by.
Are they filling in any, any marshy land or anything?
No, there's no jurisdictional wetland on the property. We, we've had it all looked at. And you know, made sure that it's in compliance with any wetlands rules. And we have a shoreline impact permit and a septic design permit to accomplish this.
So it's like the house is going to be set up on like a stone wall? Is it going to have a big stone? I mean, six feet of just dirt? All I can think of is in a big rain, it's all going in the river.
Well, no, it has to be stabilized. I mean, the ground will be stabilized and, and sloped off at an appropriate slope. It's not going to be on, it's not going to look like it's, you know, up six feet in the air. It's, it looks like the fill is about three feet in here around the buildings and then it's going to taper off. And it'll be, you know, grassed and, and stabilized. Moment it's seeded or park mulch, whoever he decides to do.
So at its highest point, it's about three feet worth that you're raising?
It's about that, yeah. For.
So it's having a basement and everything underneath, right? Cement basement and all that?
No, um, obviously the garage is a slab and the house is also a slab.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm thinking some, you know, garage, basement and then the house. So like, that's what I was thinking. But is how close is it to the river, really?
Um, it's about 60 feet from the high watermark.
How much, Mark?
60 or so.
60 feet?
Yeah, about 60.
That's from the high watermark. Okay.
The state requirement is no closer than 50 and that's what your zoning is.
Uh, and it's interesting to me that FEMA has not upgraded its, its requirements regarding the 100-foot floods since now we are so often experiencing floods much higher than that.
Most of the maps were updated in the recent years. And everybody, the engineers have, we're all using factors now to, to accommodate the conditions that we're in right now.
But, okay, so I'm not understanding. So all the engineers are using what?
Well, we're used, we're, we're using factors in our calculate.
Factors.
That take into consideration climate change.
Okay.
That we didn't look at, you know, even five, six years ago. But these, you know, FEMA's maps were all, have been updated. They're, they're current the last few years.
Um, and my, my other question was some concern for two different kinds of turtles that have shown up in this area, landings and wood turtles?
Sure, um. I, I honestly don't remember them showing up and how they were addressed in the shoreline impact permit. But, but certainly I could provide that information for you concerning the turtles, if they did in fact show up when this application was done.
It looked like to me the way that it was listed in that application was, you know, these may be in this habitat area, so keep a lookout and then if they do contact somebody, but I'm trying to find it right now. I don't have it right in front of me.
And nor do I, but I seem to recall that they wanted New Hampshire Fishing Game brought into this.
There we go.
Okay, so, um, or we're ha, we have to address fishing game concerns and we do have the landings of the wood turtle that did come up and I had some correspondence a year ago with Kim Tuttle from New Hampshire Fishing Game. And a lot of times Kim asks that we make, add specific notes to the plans. And that usually satisfies their requirements, but let me check on that.
Yeah. So you can actually see it on the right-hand side of the plan there where it says, if these are found or they're found laying eggs, contact. Do you know, who are those contacts? Is that over at Fishing Game or is that someplace else?
Um, that would be New Hampshire Fishing Game.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's how the two turtle, um, the two turtles that have been seen in the area would be addressed.
If somebody found, somebody would have to find a turtle laying eggs? Really? With bulldozers operating and all of that? I mean, we, we know that these animals are in that area. It's the perfect habitat for them.
So we, we were required to, to satisfy New Hampshire's fishing games. You know, the fact that they have been seen in the area by putting this note on here. So this note has satisfied New Hampshire Fishing Game and the New Hampshire Wetlands Bureau through the shoreline impact permit process. So I can't speak to how visible a turtle would be during construction. But all I know is that we've satisfied New Hampshire Fishing.
And, and I would just like to add in as an addendum to that, those kinds of lax satisfactions are precisely why these animals are of special concern or endangered. It, it is, it is because this agency and DES lack inspectors and, and are, you know, have a very laissez-faire approach to the conservation of these animals. It's very frustrating. At any rate, it's law, right? It's, it's what the law is right now. And so it's a shame.
I'd be happy to look into the issue further for you. Um, I, I wasn't aware that that we were going to be talking about turtles. That's all.
Well, nobody expects that. Turtles are always a surprise, Mark. I'm, I'm gratified to see, you know, the, the 60-foot buffer, no tree cutting. You know, that, that really, I hope will enhance, enhance the likelihood that if turtles want to use that property, there is some place for them to go. So that's good.
And so I noticed on your schematic that you have in front of us, that you've got thickly wooded listed in, in a few places, especially off to the left there. Is that expected to remain thickly wooded? Or is that saying that it is currently now and will end up needing to be cut for, whether it's lawn or gardens or whatever other uses?
Well, it says no tree cutting.
Well, the no tree cutting is at the bottom. I mean, just kind of a, right around where his hand mouse cursor is to the left.
Oh yeah, thickly wooded. So this is a proposed natural woodland buffer. Um, nothing is supposed to be cut in this area that's shaded right here.
Perfect.
And on the other side as well?
Right. And the requirement is that in the zone between 50 and 150 feet from the river, at least 25% of the land areas to remain as a natural woodland buffer.
Uh-oh.
So that's, that's right in the state rules.
That doesn't, that, that goes against the no tree cutting, doesn't it? If they can cut 75% of the trees?
Different buffer, Chris?
No. So, um,
there's the 50 foot and then there's from 50 to, I think he said 150. And those are the two different rules. So the no tree cut that you see is within the 50 foot that he's mentioning.
The natural woodland buffer is, is the zone between 50 and 150 feet from the river. So it's this area here.
Yeah.
And the law states that you have 25% of that land area has to remain as a natural woodland buffer post-development. So this is designated by the shaded area right here.
And do you happen to have the percentage calculations? Because that looks like you're probably closer to 60% of it covered.
Sure does. I, I can get it for you. It's not, it's not really relevant, but I'd be happy to pull it up.
Just trying to, to help give numbers if you have them, because that seems a far more reasonable than the, from a conservation standpoint, which as you can tell, Chris is highly conservation minded. 60% is far more reasonable than 25% base.
60%, 63.
I have a question. Why, why is there such a big gap between the house and the garage? Is that a big gap? I can't tell. It's so small. I don't know how many feet it is. I can't tell.
It's about 30, 30 feet.
30 feet. Because I, I mean, I, I always thought 60 feet to the river is not, not very far. Why, I, why did I think we had 125 foot? They changed that zoning.
We used to. Yeah, they got rid of that.
Because 60 feet is not much. Boy, when the water comes off a roof and everything, that's why I was wanting to push the house back another 10 or 15 feet from the river.
Yeah, the layout was as the owner proposed.
Yeah. But I'm, I, I'm surprised DES even, you know, with roofs and stuff and all the water coming off the roofs and getting into the river and the 60 feet is not very far.
Yeah, the, their, their requirements are more centered around the percentage of impervious that you're going to be proposing to a lot. Um, as long as you meet the 50-foot requirement for the, for the primary structure, that's within their rules. They're really more concerned about the percentage of impervious.
I, I do have one more question, Mark. Why is there a bathroom in the garage?
Uh, that was the owner's desire.
Um, so there's one bathroom there and a two-bedroom house. So, so is the owner aware that the garage would not be available for an additional person to live in?
He is. Yeah, I made that quite clear. And he knows that.
I, I personally would love another bathroom in the garage because it's a great thing when you clean up after doing a lot of work before coming in the house.
Right, but it's highly unusual.
Well, yeah, I will, it, it is not typical. He's a very hands-on person. Um, he builds staging for TV networks and he's also, looks like he is mechanically inclined, so you know, he might live out there.
So a, a question for maybe either Mark or Russ, just because I, I feel like we're kind of blurring some lines here. Can you clarify the difference between this Loma request and where it seems like we're asking questions towards what would be a building permit style?
Yes, they are completely unrelated. Um, you've been asking me questions that relate to shoreline impact and not the request for from FEMA, which is all about making sure that the buildings are raised up out of that floodplain.
Thank you.
Well, I, and I, I think that we're, that we're concerned with all of that, actually, Mark, that, you know, using 100-year flood, I, I'm, I'm quite concerned for people. I mean,
You're, I'm sorry, you're concerned with?
I'm sor, I'm concerned for these people that 100-year floodplain is, is not a very forward way of viewing how buildings should be permitted. I mean, this is something, it's a town, I guess we've got to look at.
Yeah. So typically in, in in most towns, what happens is a septic designer makes a, a guess or an estimate on where the house should be placed. And most of this elevation stuff is completely ignored until after the structure is built. So this process is about avoiding a problem later on. And making sure that the buildings are properly raised up in accordance with Webster's floodplain ordinance and FEMA's requirements.
So the, the, the septic system has to be raised as well?
It does not. The state of New Hampshire does not have requirements for septic systems within the floodplain.
But it is, it says it's a sealed to prevent infiltration and that's a little different, isn't it, Mark?
I'm sorry?
The septic system, I'm reading, proposed 12, 150-gallon concrete septic tank sealed to prevent infiltration and exfiltration. Is that different from a normal septic tank?
Um, no, it's, it's a septic tank, but it does have a coating, an exterior coating on the outside of it. Just to give another level of protection.
So does this have a leach field too or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does, okay. Oh, okay, okay. I see. That's the tank. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So you just kind of set, you're not designing the house and all, you're just kind of setting it where you think it should go.
Yes, I'm a, I'm a site engineer.
I know you've been around a while, a long time because I remember dealing with you before from many things in Webster. Or anywhere, but anyway, so, but you have a good reputation. So, but that's the deal, right? You just set the place there and so they, so they can move it where they want to in a way.
Um, the, while the buildings need to be put within your building setbacks, which are right here. Um, but yes, I mean, there's some wiggle room, but you can see this corner is closed here. There's not a lot of wiggle room here. So he's gonna, this will be put right where the plans show it.
Okay.
And there was no house here before ever, right?
Right, this is, um, this, yeah, this is raw land. It was in the Frost family from the seventies. Ron's father subdivided and this was owned by Ron up until a couple of years ago when this fellow tour con purchased it from Ron. Ron and his wife.
Yep.
Okay, well, I have a better understanding of it. So thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. So what do we have for the process now that we need to do, Russ? Now that we've had all our questions?
I can kind of explain that. If you, um, we are submitting, um, we are submitting this. Uh, can, it's called a conditional Loma and there's about a half a dozen things that need to be attached to this when it gets filed with FEMA. And one of them is the community acknowledgement form, which I sent to Ross. And this basically is saying that you know, you feel like this is going to be done outside of the floodplain. I mean, you're really taking my word as a professional because your, your own building inspector isn't, you know, doesn't do any of this stuff. So so this is one piece of the conditional Loma that gets filed and it requires the community officials signature.
Well, I, I don't feel comfortable personally signing this. So Dave, if you'd like to go ahead and sign it, if you feel comfortable with this, go ahead.
Do we have? Comfortable, Dave, or is there something, something else I can?
Well, I'm trying to, if this is going to be the regulatory whatever for, that, that we don't have through Tom Bay, who is our, our current inspector. Do we have, I guess this is a question for Russ and/or Dana. Do we have contacts with, for example, Hopkinton so they could look at and review this for us? That way we have an appropriate professional?
Are you talking about the Hop, Hopkinton, the US Army Corps in Hopkinton? Is that what you're talking about or?
No, their, their inspector, for example, for floodplain, et cetera.
I have not read about the Hopkinton, Dave.
Okay.
David, I just, you know, I think this is a, um, you know, DES, this is, these, these people at DES and FEMA and so on, they are, they are the people that allow this kind of thing to happen, which I'm philosophically opposed to. And so that's why I don't feel comfortable signing it. I don't think you're going to find anybody more qualified than perhaps Mark himself or you know, a FEMA or DES person who's already sort of given this a look over.
Uh, who is your contact at DES? Because the, um,
Yeah, Jason, Jason Obi is no longer there.
He does shoreline stuff, but he, he wouldn't have a ton of experience with um, the FEMA stuff. But some of the, the people over at the Hopkinton Everdam may have may be familiar with some of this paperwork and be able to give you a better level of comfort and maybe a third party, if you had some questions. I'd also be, I, I can show you what the conditional Loma form looks like. And I can also tell you that, like I mentioned, there's probably very few people that actually go through this process. It was myself and the surveyor that are making sure that, you know, everything is done right. So this is.
I, I'm more looking at the, where it says that we're the official responsible for floodplain management. And I, that seems like that would either be an inspector or somebody like our disaster management.
Well, usually it gets, um, the building inspector, the code enforcement officer. I, I had originally put Tom's name in here.
Yeah, Tom, Tom is about to be, hopefully he will become our actual code enforcement person. And, and so.
Okay, he is a building inspector right now?
He is.
He would, that would be an adequate signature, in my opinion, for this form. Because a lot of the paperwork that I've looked at calls for building inspector. I wrote down code enforcement officer because I thought that was Tom's title.
Not yet.
Okay, so I can change that to building inspector. And that's totally acceptable if Tom signs it to me.
But this is, this is still about responsibility for floodplain management, correct? And, and he's, you know, I wouldn't say that Tom is knowledgeable as of yet in floodplain matters. So. Dave, that's, you know, it's possibly a good idea to talk to, um.
It's, uh, Rob Lewinsky is our emergency management director.
I've already brought this up to Rob.
Perfect, thank you, Russ.
And Rob wasn't familiar with this and this is how, this is how we got down this whole, this whole course. I went to Rob, he put me to the people that work at the dam. Then I went to the state, which is Amara, let me get her name. So I can don't butcher it.
So the people, the people at the dam wouldn't talk to us?
They referred me to somebody, but they never got back to me.
Oh, I see.
And then I went to Samara Ebinger over at the state. She's the flood manager for the New Hampshire Department of Strategic Initiatives. And then she looked over the entire application. And then I also sent it to our local DES rep, Tyler, I'm trying to get his last name. Tyler Davidson.
Where does he work?
He's New Hampshire.
Which division, do you know?
I think he's wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, none of these people, you know, I would suggest if you want a third-party opinion or guidance that, um, I can give you a name of somebody over at the dam that I'll look him up, I'll talk to him and I'll tell him where we're at with this. And I'd be happy to do that if, if you think that might be helpful.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that would be awesome.
Me too. Me three.
Sorry to make this a longer process than, than you probably had hoped, but we want to make sure that we do it right.
I cannot.
Yes, when it should be no, or a no when it should be yes, so.
And this is a Class A river too. I went to that hearing many years ago and we don't want to mess it up.
All right, sounds good.
I have a question.
Who is speaking, please? Oh, hi, Betsy.
Hi, if, if this river were in the river protection program, would this house be allowed? That's my question. We're not in that program yet, but we're thinking about it.
Can you answer that, Mark?
Oh, I have no idea about the river protection program. I don't feel familiar with that.
Okay, so.
Curious.
Oh, I think it's a good question. So, okay, so Mark, so you'll, you'll make that contact for us at the dam. And, and then will they, will they contact Dana?
Um, Russ, what would you like me to do, Russ?
Or Russ?
It's fine, you can have them contact me.
Okay.
I'll send them the stuff.
Hey Dana, um, what's your title at the town hall?
My title is town administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but Russ is very, has worked on this, uh, put a lot of time into this, so he would be most helpful to you.
Okay.
Yeah, Russ, uh, wears a couple hats. He's our assistant to the town administrator, but also our land use coordinator. So that's why you've been seeing Russ a lot for land and similar related items.
Okay. Well, listen, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, I hope he stops his sharing. Okay, good.
He was closing out and, oh, there we go.
Okay. So.
All right, looks like that'll be on our agenda again next time.
Um, I think that it would be a very useful thing for the dam person and Russ and somebody from conservation to go over together. Um, and, you know, anybody else that wants to go to go over together to this lot, because I think there's a lot to be learned by being on the ground and actually seeing what this is and what, you know, what is being proposed. And I think as land becomes more scarce, as good buildable lots are built out and less buildable lots, like a 12,000 square foot lot, they're going to happen more and more now. You know, if they're on the record at all, it, it, it will help the board in the future make decisions like this instead of having things being drawn up, drawn out, excuse me. So. I know, I know myself from the conservation commission, I'd be extremely interested in seeing how this whole thing, what, what it looks like. And I've tried to find this place so many times. And every time I go over there, I can't see it. And Betsy, you and I went over there. And we couldn't see, we couldn't see the lot. We couldn't see where there was room to put a house anywhere. So, um, apparently we just overlooked it.
Uh, so Russ, uh, please let us know as the, uh, board, once we get that information from Mark and who the contact is so that we can start that discussion. And once we're talking with them, then we can bloop in folks as appropriate.
Okay, sounds good.
Good. Um, okay, um, is Mike here? I don't think Mike is here.
Mike said he would be here at about seven fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just got a message. He was running late.
Okay, well then let's take care of monthly department reports. So Steve, you kindly sent over your report to us earlier. Do you want to synopsize?
I can. And I see that Wendy is here. Wendy did send me on March twenty-fourth an update. Uh, but for some reason it went into my spam folder and I found it today. Um, so Wendy, I didn't really mean for you to go to the spam, but I found it, so I updated it. So the proposed budget, I have seventy, where is it? Where is it? Where is it? Seventy-five point four percent left. So that equals to two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents out of the two hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and thirty-dollar budget. For COVID activity, we have only one active case in town, which is really good, and that will be completely concluded probably within the next.
Oh, you're muted, chief.
Oh, must have tapped mute button, chief. There we go.
So we have, we have one active case for COVID and that should be completely gone within the next uh, three or four days, I believe, because it's, the time allotment will be up. So it's been real good. We've been pretty much COVID-free. From March first to the thirty-first, we weren't, weren't that busy, but we still did seventy-two motor vehicle stops, had thirteen summonses. Fines totaled a thousand eighty-five dollars. We also had four arrests with seven charges. Sexual assault, theft by deception, criminal mischief, DWI's, criminal trespass, and a bunch of arrests on warrants. The officers responded to fifty other calls. Six for the fire EMS, twelve to other agencies, domestic violence petitions, sex offender registrations, which is always not good. Vacant house checks, pistol permits, motor vehicle complaints, just to name some of them. Um, so it was not a real busy, but easy enough to keep us active. Myself and the lieutenant finished a two-pots, the second part of that training for, uh, the victim's trauma and training for us. And just to give you a heads up on the Deer Meadow Road fire that we had. Uh, the mother is still in critical condition, but the nine-year-old girl and her brother are out of the hospital and doing very well. At home, they're doing great. So that is a huge plus and I gotta give credit to the fire department for what they've done. So I'm glad. But we are losing a part-time officer. Um, one of our officers is moving to Florida. Uh, so he'll be with us for another month and then he's headed to Florida for sunshine and warm weather for probably the rest of his life. And hopefully our equipment for our new cruiser will be in within the next two weeks. That's what they said. So other than that, I'm pretty quiet.
Is the cruiser all bulked up with all the stuff it needs, a new one?
We, we don't have it. That's just, that's what I'm talking about. Two weeks, everything should be in. They've got about ninety percent of it in and they said we're waiting for just a couple more items. The cage was back ordered, uh, but we should have everything within the next two weeks.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay, great.
A, a quick question regarding the, the COVID numbers. I noticed that we've had reports of like, you know, there's a couple here or one here, et cetera. And then looking at the, uh, state COVID reporting for Webster, it's often been zero, 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 and now it says seven. Um, how, how does that get correspond to what we have?
I don't think they're, they put seven down because they never delete the ones that have been over two weeks. And they need to delete the ones that have been over two weeks because that's the incubation period that they set. And now they've dropped that to ten days, but, uh, uh, they just don't delete them. We get an update almost every three days. Unless we added one, they, they sent it to us immediately.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Um, I don't think Emmett is here, is he?
I do not see him. I also don't see his representatives.
Well, there's Mike, though.
So I guess I'll ask, uh, unless Chris wants to, to do something else, I'd like to ask Steve. Obviously, it's not your department, but have you heard much, uh, out of fire as how, how they're doing at this point?
They're doing pretty good. I know Emmett, I don't, I don't know if everybody's familiar with it. Emmett's been pretty down and out. He's been, uh, ill, hasn't felt really good. Um, that's, might be the reason why he's not here. He was under the weather for a while. Physically, I, I believe more than anything. I think probably just rundown from everything that he's had to do for the past couple of weeks. Uh, but he seems to be on the mend and I talked to him today for a while and he's doing okay.
So he was at the salt shed committee meeting today?
Yes.
And he told me that the problem that he's been having is smoking inhalation damage to his lungs from the fire.
Right.
So on top of everything else, he's having to deal with that. And he was having trouble breathing today when we were outside, so.
Hopefully he'll get better.
I hope so. Um, okay, Mike, welcome. Nope, I can't hear you.
Let's try this now, thank you.
Good, good.
I apologize, I got a late jump from work and, uh, got home as quickly as I could, under the speed limit, chief, of course.
That's okay. I wasn't there. I didn't see a thing.
Um, so just planning ahead, so I, I will tell you that Michelle, Sarah, Nancy and I met down at the school, uh, yesterday or Saturday, actually, and did a walk around and sort of timed everything out, took a look at things. I think we've got a pretty solid plan going into April seventeenth, weather permitting. We know how, how we want to run things. I am meeting Fred Regan at the school on Wednesday morning. Um, just to go through what's going to be available from the school district and then what we're going to need to do to make sure that, uh, town meeting is all set up for success. So I feel like we're on the right track and, and then the next thing is to make sure that, uh, or to make sure, to hope that the weather cooperates with us. Certainly on, on Saturday, it was a little bit cool, but it was certainly comfortable. Um, and, you know, if we had picked that date, I think we could have had town meeting outdoors. People might have had a hat on or, you know, an extra jacket or whatever, but, uh, it, it, the sun was out, it was shining. Um, so we've got a real good sense of the way everything sits down there, so.
Mike, oh, sorry.
No.
I, I have a question here. I noticed in your script that the, as per usual, the chair of the board gives a five-minute PowerPoint presentation. How is that going to work outside?
Well, so the first thing is, do you want to do a PowerPoint presentation? I will tell you that, that basically as we're behind the school, looking toward the playground, toward the river. Uh, the sun was sort of, you know, it might have been at four o'clock from that angle, so it's sort of behind you, so it won't be shining in your eyes. Um, but I think it's going to make a screen difficult because it's just, it's not going to be, um, easy if it's a bright sunny day. If it's an overcast day, that's a different, uh, situation. But, um, I'm concerned about a PowerPoint and how that will play out there.
Yeah, so I can just, I can just talk. I feel like I've got, I've got a lot to say. I can fill up at least like two and a half minutes beautifully. So, um, you know, I can hand out pictures of, um, us working on Zoom. Everybody will be thrilled. So, um, no, I think, I think, you know, if I just talk um, and, and give everybody sort of a synopsis of what, what's been going on.
Chris, I, I honestly think that is going to play and work better out there, just given, um, all the unknowns, uh, but, you know, handouts, I, I, I certainly am not one to.
No, 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 I was kidding.
Paper handouts, but if it's something that facilitates what people have in their hand and can see, that's another way to do it.
Yeah. So do we plan to make, how, how have our annual reports been selling, by the way? Have people, you know, been steadily picking them up or, because usually we have a bunch of them at town meeting for people to look through.
We will have a sufficient number at town meeting for them to look through. I can't say that they have been on the popular bestseller list for the last couple of weeks. But we have had a few people that have come in for them. I think a lot of people pick them up at voting.
Yeah.
And we will have them available at the meeting for those that do not have them.
Yeah.
And I know several people have looked at them online as well.
Good.
And, yeah.
And then I had another question. And Mike, maybe you know the answer to this. Dana, maybe you know the answer to this. Normally, after elections, the town meeting is directly, you, you know, usually within a couple of days of elections. And the person that is no longer going to be on the board, in this case, me, steps off and the new person steps on. So here we are now, quite a bit down the road from that. And somebody asked me today, am I truly still on the select board? And my understanding was that I truly am still on the select board. Um, this will be my last meeting and the town meeting will be my last town meeting, um, being involved. It, is that, am I certain that that is the case? Are we certain about this? Dave's nodding, so.
Hundred percent right, Chris. The, when the executive order was written, they basically had, uh, I mean, the folks who prepared the warrant need to deliver the warrant, explain the warrant, answer questions about the warrant at the business meeting. And so because that got delayed back, you're hooked in for an extra month and a half, same salary too, I think, that we, you know, right through that.
You betcha.
Um, as soon as the meeting is dissolved, so when we've taken our last action and the, the town says we're dissolving the meeting for twenty twenty-one. You are no longer a select person at that point and will swear in, uh, Marlo right after that will occur, but you're, you're riding it all the way through that dissolution.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I'm glad I asked. So, um, okay. So how, how can this, should the select board think about coming early to the town meeting site and helping to set up? how, how can this, should the select board think about coming early to the town meeting site and helping to set up chairs and do whatever needs to be done?
Yep, so we're going to meet at 11:30. I'm, I'm actually getting my second shot that morning, so most of my reactions not till Sunday, but anyway. So we will be there at 11:30 to do the setup. And so if select board members want to come at that point, just to make sure that we've got everything set. But basically, folks will be checking in on the, kind of behind the gym, there's a paved area. We're gonna take good old sideways chalk and draw lanes and, you know, directions and the whole nine yards to help people to get in there. Cordon off a, a handicap parking area that's in that immediate vicinity for folks. What I'm envisioning, and, and I just want to verify with you, but we're envisioning a table, actually two tables for the select board. So I'm gonna, in the very back of the, of the school, in that area that we're setting this up, I'm gonna put the moderators lectern right in the middle. Two tables to my left, which will be for the select board. And probably two tables to the right, which will be the staff tables. So that we have everybody sort of right up front. And if, if you're thinking that there are other people who need to be there, but certainly guidance from the select board in terms of like staff, who's going to be sitting at the table? And if you were to tell me, gosh, you know, it's better if we had staff closer to the select board and not separated off, we can figure that out. We can make it, make it work that morning. So that everything will, will flow and come together nicely. So again, being on hand, that day would be a plus.
Okay, good. And sometimes we have our town council at our, at our meetings. Last year we didn't, and I don't think the year before we did either. Am I right on that, Mike? I think, I think that's right. I'm not sure we need town to have, but we've got a new town council this year. And, and so, you know, maybe people would like to meet him. What, what are your thoughts on that, Dana?
I think it's always nice to have council there. Questions come up. I don't see that with this meeting, what you have in the warrant, that there's going to be many legal questions. And you would have to weigh the fact that you have to pay him to be there, but we certainly could ask him. So I haven't given you much of an answer, but I guess I'm just saying it's up to the board what they would like.
Dee and Dave, what do you think?
Well, we have a really short agenda, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem too controversial. I mean, I always liked to have an attorney there anyway, but when it comes to money.
Yeah, I would say that as much as I would love people to be able to meet our new town council. I don't think I would like to ask all of our taxpayers to pay for towns council just to come say hi. Cause I don't see that there's going to be a, a legal issue because it's a really short warrant article with just generic housekeeping items on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think too, so.
Okay, good. Okay, just wanted to bring that one up.
Are we having, excuse me, are we having microphones out there?
That's our goal. So I, I'm checking with Fred. We definitely need a PA system.
Yes.
So that, and so basically as you walk away from, I think it's the library and head toward the playground, sort of at the back, we're gonna put some caution tape and then anybody who is unable to wear a mask will have space available to them, more toward the, the back of the room, or the room, listen to me, the back of the space. And so they need to be able to hear back there. And so we do need a PA system to make that happen and we, we're looking, depending on what the school has available. You know, we may need to have a, a separate mic back there that can allow somebody to speak from the maskless area also. So we're trying to work all of that detail out to make sure we can make this happen.
When do you expect we might know about the, that PA system versus having to pull stuff over from town hall and change those plans to make that work?
We, we'll know Wednesday after I meet with Fred, the facilities director. He's, he's fabulous. He'll make things work for us. He totally understands the partnership between school and town. So if it's not at Webster Elementary, but it's in the district, I'm sure he will help us with that. So we're sort of a reserving as a last ditch using the equipment from the town hall. Cause I, I just don't, I mean, it's plug and play. That may not be the case when you move it. So we just want to make sure that we have a good handle on it.
Yep.
How are you feeling, Mike?
I feel great. I mean, compared to how I felt at the, at the worst of it, I am so much better. I had, so when I had my first shot, I had a pretty bad reaction to it. I think it's because I still had the antibodies from infection. So I almost had like a mini COVID relapse on the Sunday. But I was back on my feet Monday, so it was just like this 24-hour nastiness that I hope doesn't happen again. We'll see.
Yeah, it was good to see you on TV the other night.
You know, at this point, it's just good to be seen every day.
Well, you always do a great job, Mike, so.
Thanks, Dee. Try my best.
Yes, you do a great job.
Yeah, thanks for all this work.
Thank you, Mike.
And then I have made, so the select board members, your editors of that document, I think Dana, I think I made you an editor also, so if you type directly on it, you know, who's doing what, we'll have it all laid out and be able to be able to follow that. So you can have a paper copy at your desk. I'm, I'm probably gonna print this one. Last year I worked off the computer, but outside internet reliability, I think I'm gonna go with a piece of paper to make sure that we can get through everything, so. But that will be our game plan and how we're gonna do it. If there are people that I need to recognize, let me know and we will make sure that we get all that woven in there. So you can send me a separate email if you wish and, and I can make sure that it's on there.
Good.
Um, Chris, regarding the people that are doing each section, which are not listed in Mike's document, did you want to keep those the same as before or did you want to change any of that with?
Let's just keep it the same.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. I think it worked really well before.
Sounds good.
So if you know what that is, if you could type it in, because I lost track of that paper. So if, if you just type in who it was that you know, make seconds and then speaks first to it, we'll make sure that we follow that flow.
Dana, do you have that?
Yes, I can do that.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay, anything else, Mike?
No, other than looking forward to having a good meeting. This will be completely unique. I don't know if Webster has ever met outdoors before. I suspect back in 18-something, they might have, but I don't know that. So it's certainly the most the first outdoor meeting in modern times, I would say, so we'll
Well, keep in mind too, that remember last year, we were one of the pioneers in state to have a, a town meeting right quick, you know, before, before it really swept westward this far. And it was a successful town meeting. People are still talking about it. You know, that it was short and sweet and fun and all of that kind of thing. So we're trendsetters here. We've got to face it.
That's right. I like those one-hour town meetings. We should do that in here.
Right.
I, I will be, so I'm gonna use Charlie's wording from the school district meeting. Where he, you know, basically said to the public, you know, please, I'm kind of appealing to not have a ballot vote unless you think it's absolutely essential or will change the outcome of, of the vote. Because if we have to go through the one-hour process of waiting with this warrant, you know, I suspect we would finish business and then be sitting there waiting to close the, close the, so. I, I, I hope people understand it's really not to take away any right that people have, but it's just given the whole scenario, just how important it is that we conduct business quickly and get people on their way, so.
Right.
And I, I, I hope people understand that trade-off.
I think it's a good idea to bring it up.
Yeah.
Regarding our town meeting, I know that in the past, there have been select board, I don't know if it's actually policies, but there have been select board ways of doing things with, for example, recording and hanging on to a recording for X number of years. And then that was changed when we adopted town hall streams and started using it and they had a different shorter retention policy. But obviously we won't be able to use town hall streams without either me doing this Zoom conference or being in town hall, since we won't have the internet and we won't have the town hall. Do I need to do something like, for example, record it on my iPad so that we can upload it to our YouTube later? Or are there any requirements there that we need to be aware of and thinking about?
From, from the town meeting portion, I don't think there's any statutory requirement to record really the, the recorded minutes. What Michelle publishes is the official record. So I think it's a question of need to have versus nice to have. And you know, if we had a recording of it from a device outdoors and we could post it, I think it's a nice thing to make available. Especially 50 years from now when people are looking back saying, what were they doing? But I, but that's not a legal requirement that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, Mike, thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks for waiting for me or being, being patient, doing something else while I was absent. All right.
Make sure you stay healthy. We want you there.
Yes, I'm doing everything I can, trust me.
Okay.
Thanks, Dee.
You're in care. Thank you.
Bet. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so now we go to town-owned properties. Dana, what are we talking about here?
We had started that discussion at the last meeting about town-owned properties and we discussed a few properties out in the Pillsbury Lake District. One is a single property that Inabutter has interest in. I wanted to be clear from the board how they'd like me to proceed with that property. And I'm just talking the Mrs. Willette for the single property. Should I send letters to all the abutters, giving them an opportunity to bid if they're interested? Is the board interested in back taxes plus expenses? We have had that property for longer than three years. So I guess I'm just looking for some direction on that.
Well, Betsy, Betsy Janeway and I went to that property and, and took a look at it. Betsy, do you want to talk at all about?
I bet you just muted yourself instead of unmuting. There you go.
Yeah, and Dan Moran also. So we've, I've made two trips to that lot. Very steep and full of rocks and I have a, had a kind of hard time seeing it being developed, but I don't know. But, what, what question are you asking, Chris?
Well, you know, we, when we went over there, we were looking at the, you know, basically the buildability of that lot. And in fact, the Willette property is above that area, not down along the side of it. Like I, like I misunderstood apparently. And she wants to put a, a garage and possibly a garden. I, I personally don't think it's it's a decent, it's possible she can get a garage back in there, but I don't, I don't see that property as being very buildable. In short, I don't think it's very buildable.
It's a rock pile.
I, I thought she was saying that she wanted the garage off the side of her house. And so maybe this would just be to satisfy setback requirements as opposed to actually being built.
So she, she, she actually has room, in my view anyway, she has room on her current lot. Where it's, where it's level and open to put a garage that would not involve that lot. She also has room for a garden as well. So if she's concerned about simply protecting herself and she agrees to join that land, and this is sort of the key thing, if she agrees to join that land to her own lot and then agrees to keep the development on her current lot, then I would say that yes, it, it, I'd be fine with that.
Well, as part of our policies, we have the, for, for Pillsbury Lake, part of our policies do state that it is for joining with the budding lands.
Yes.
So
Right.
That absolutely would, would be a part of that. As far as controlling what they do with the land once they own it, that's a bit different. I think it would, especially you saying that it's not buildable because it's just steep and rocky. I don't think that it makes sense to try and go overly aggressive on that, since if it's not buildable, it's just not going to be buildable. And so that will protect it in and of itself, but give them still the setback areas for working up top.
Anybody can build anything on anything. Really, there's, I don't think there's a piece of property on this planet that given enough dynamite and enough huge machinery.
And enough money, you could do anything.
Yeah.
That's what I say.
And I, I, I take what you're saying seriously, Dave. I, I understand that, you know, once it becomes her property, we can't exactly tell her what she can do on her property. The, I, I don't know, I guess I would have reservation about her. You know.
But if it's merged, you can't do, put two houses on one lot.
Oh, no, 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 no. There's an understanding, it's written in, into the policy that even a merged lot can't be built upon.
Right.
As in another house.
Maybe she wants, right, but she might want to put a rock garden in there or some people like that.
That'd be a good idea. She wouldn't have much to do. So.
The big thing is, do we back taxes and how much is owed on that other lot and is that all we're questioning? Just, we're not just gonna give it to her, she'd have to buy it, right?
And so what we've done, what we've done in the past is just have people pay back taxes and, and also monies that the town might have spent on that property, which in this case is nothing. So and in Pillsbury Lake, I think that the policies are specific, there are specific things that we do in Pillsbury Lake that we don't do in other parts of the town. Just because the town has said in the past that we want to encourage larger lots at Pillsbury Lake. So
Correct.
We, we have in the past, and even what in the recent past, we recently agreed to quote-unquote, sell a parcel to a, a person who wanted the abutting land. And that parcel went for back taxes, I think, and that was it. Donahue, was it Donahue?
Yeah, so, so to quote our, I don't remember the name, but to quote our policy, which I just pulled up. Vacant Pillsbury Lake properties shall be offered to abutting property owners first, with the condition that the two properties be merged. These lots are to be sold to the highest responsible bidder and must cover all costs. Other property, other Pillsbury Lake properties that are adjacent and can be merged to each other may first be merged by the town and then sold as one property. And there's more, but I, I think that, you know, that's, that's the key there.
So I think there's only one other abutter and that's down below.
Yeah, I think, well, there's obviously multiple abutters, but there's only two that I think you could actually merge.
Well, yeah. So.
Well, technically you can merge across streets, so.
So yeah, yeah. So what are they, what is the back taxes on that land? Do you, anybody know?
I'm not sure the exact amount, Dee. They're in the vicinity of between $200 and $300.
See, I personally, I think you should ask more than that, but each, all land is available. And it's all worth more and more, but even if they want to abut it, I mean, I don't know how, how big the lot is, I have no idea.
But I Pillsbury Lake, so it's, you know, probably a half acre at most.
So I, well, half acres, you know, even if it's a rock, it's worth money to be
It's one-third of an acre.
One-third, okay.
Pardon?
It's one-third of an acre, Dee.
One-third of an acre?
It's pretty little.
It's pretty little is right, but it's, I mean, even if they offered us $1,000 or something.
Yeah, so I think the process is one question and then the amount is the second question. And maybe our process should include a way to come up with the amount. And maybe our process should include a way to come up with the amount. Um, but the, the pro, the starting process here is of course that it will be a bid and that it will be requesting from uh, at least the abutters. Uh, that doesn't mean that we can't set a starting bid price that we think is reasonable. Uh, now in some cases, not this particular land, uh, but in some cases that may be uh, back taxes plus improvements or uh, plus legal expenses, et cetera. In um, other cases, it may be that, well, it's just the town owns it and we wanna start bidding at something closer to a normal uh, realty value of the land. Um, so those are all options that we can look at.
And we can't always reserve the right to reject any bids, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so. Well, I know my daughter at one time, um, she and her husband bid on a, a lot and, and um, and they put in a pretty decent bid. I mean, they got it, but you know, they put in, I'm the one that told them they should put in more than they, you know, than just the taxes. So, and they built a really nice house there too. That was a vacant lot. The house was torn down, the original house, they town took it down, so. But anyway, so that's why all land is valuable, so you know, if they wanted just to to keep their abutters away or somebody close to them, so that's why I just thought to me um, just for the taxes, it should be more, I would think, but a little, and I don't know how much more, but something.
And Dee, I believe at one of the last uh, meetings, you mentioned uh, calling up uh, one of your realtors to take a look at them. Did any of them get a chance to look at any of these properties?
I, I didn't even call them cuz I wasn't, I should probably drop the ball, but I didn't know if we definitely wanted somebody to go out there and look, cuz I don't know where the land, I don't know where either, any of those lots are. But I can call, I can do that, you know, tomorrow.
If I, if I can jump in here, um, there was a, a lot on New London Drive a couple of years ago that was a third of an acre and sold for six thousand four hundred dollars. So.
Yes, but was it buildable?
Well, yes, I, I don't know. I don't know. It was on sale as a buildable lot. So. Um.
And I'm just going off memory, but I think it was said at the last meeting that it was somewhere around three thousand dollars was assessed value of this lot.
Yes.
Three thousand dollars.
If I, if I might, it's been, it's been uh, the town's longstanding policy to uh, reduce uh, the number of lots at Pillsbury Lake. There, every one of them is substandard by any reasonable estimation, uh. Uh, it relieves the uh, possible impact on the water system over there uh, among other things and, I mean, what's the town getting right now for tax revenue on that lot, which probably is unbuildable, at least, at least from our perspective right now, but I've been here uh, in town long enough, so I have seen a lot of lots that we thought, you know, thirty or forty years ago, oh, that, nobody will ever build there, well, guess what? They have, so uh, I think it's uh, it's certainly in the town's interest to uh, you know, to uh, just, hey, take the tax money and uh, uh, three thousand dollars sounds, sounds like it's, sounds like it's overvalued in the first place. Uh, but there'll be, you know, with the town, we'll get some taxes on in the future and uh, uh, if the lots are merged, uh, uh, there's no way there's ever gonna be an additional dwelling there.
Right.
But I think people would also pay a little bit of money. I don't say going rate, but they would, just to have a buffer between just to protect their own property, so they don't have neighbors or whatever.
Whatever.
No, George, thank you for that. Um.
But there are, there are, there are properties over there now. There are lots over there right now that, uh, now that the weather's warmed up, you'd need hip boots to walk through them.
I know it.
Oh, I know.
So, and I hate to take what they're probably assessed at.
So why don't we, you know, maybe I would suggest that we set a minimum price. Um. Roy, are you sleeping?
So.
Golly.
I'm wa, I'm watching. I, I'm just, is this the property off of Ruffett Drive?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, truthfully, with the rock, even if someone paid two thousand dollars for it, okay? It's gonna cost them, if they want to put a house in there, if I bought it. I know, I understand, okay, but I think you have your saving grace where you can reject the bid, but truthfully, I'm gonna say it. I wouldn't give more than five hundred dollars for that corner lot. I walked by that, I took a look at it and I, I think the town would be doing great if they got five hundred bucks and then whoever bought it, one of those two houses, they merged it you know, with their property, that's where you're gonna get your dollar value at a later date.
I agree. And, and I like the idea of incentivizing people to think about vacant abutting lots as, as good for their long-term financial investment in their property. So, um, yeah, I was gonna suggest a, a low uh, a mark that would be our, our bottom acceptable bid. And we could say five hundred, we could say a thousand. Um, you know, and then ask the other abutter, ask the two abutters to submit bids on the land.
Yeah, if, if they wanted it, because then you're gonna get your dollar value, it'll lead at eight.
Right.
By the increase in taxes.
Sure.
Uh, because really, it, it's a good road on both sides of that, because we just improved that road. It, when you go up Ruffett Drive and you take a look at it, it, it's kinda like a fork and we've improved the road to the left. I'm trying to think of the name of it. Is it General Stark?
General Stark, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we've improved that road. So the person, if they wanted to take a tree out of there, you know, they, they have access easy enough. If they wanna take a rock, they got plenty of rocks.
Right. So, so what do you all think? So do you wanna, do you wanna set a, a minimum price? So we can move along on this, instead of, you know, we could probably settle on a process here. Of course, our process needs to be consistent
Right.
From here on, on, you know, so.
Now, that's why I'm trying to be a little bit cautious about it and include the, the price portion in it. Cuz you know, at this, at this point with this lot, I don't think anyone's gonna have any questions or misgivings about trying to unload the lot and get somebody else to have it and have a little higher tax input. But there are certainly other lots where that's probably not reasonably responsible. Um, and so trying to come up with a generic process of how do we look at that and look at what our minimum bids should be, uh, seems like a, a reasonable response.
Wha, what's the yearly tax rate for that piece of property, David? Any idea?
I don't have it in front of me. I can.
Okay, i, i, at le, at least that with what the minimum tax rate would be.
The total taxes, Roy, would be something along, in the lines of seventy dollars.
Oh, Jesus.
The school and everything, so it's, it's not a huge amount.
Yeah.
So if we, uh, just for sake here of the things that we've heard, since we've uh, heard the mention of approximately three thousand dollars worth of value and we've heard both a five hundred and a thousand dollar figure uh, of what Chris was starting to mention for proposing as a minimum. If we're looking at something like the thousand, then that would give us a reasonable starting point of, you know, a third the back taxes or a third of the assessed value, whichever is higher as a minimum.
Um, that sounds pretty good to me.
A third of the back taxes?
No, a third of assessed value or the back taxes, whichever is higher.
Okay.
That sounds like a pretty good formula to me.
Yeah, a, and then you have the right to reject.
Right, exactly. Good man, Roy, too.
So.
Smile.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
And so I'll go forward and prepare a bid for two abuttered owners with those terms.
Right.
As well as the requirement contingent upon merging those lots upon the sale.
Mm-hmm, and at their legal expense, of course.
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I suppose I should replace it for, for future proofing with other properties. I should say that instead of just back taxes, it's back taxes and expenses.
Yeah. If applicable, right?
Yes.
Right.
You know, some cases there won't be any of those cuz it was donated land, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's the roulette property and then I think Phil is here. Phil, is that you there?
Yes.
Hi, Phil.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay.
Good.
The properties that Phil is interested in, you had mentioned at your last meeting, um, the town acquired a property um, this last summer that is uh, adjacent to those and you had mentioned the desire to merge them all prior to sale.
And which does, which does appear to line up with the selling of properties policy that we have.
Right. And since we own all those, we can go ahead and merge them prior to the sale.
Well, then, if we did that, that we'd be incurring legal expenses, right?
Well, we would have to chat, talk to the planning board. What would it be, Russ, as far as legal expenses?
So I think it would just. Voluntary merger, which is just a form.
Yeah. And we'd have to do the recording fees.
It's, it's minimal.
Okay. So.
We would have to pay twenty dollars to record the deed.
See that, Phil? The kind of burden you're putting on the town. God. Um, so we had also discussed last time Phil was here contacting the other, there's an abutter in there for, on forty-seven A, I think. Uh, uh, do I have that right, Phil?
Um, you have the dowels.
The, yes, right.
Yeah, there is another abutter. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and there's another person on that, on that road. That abuts that property.
And who may or may not have any interest in, in these parcels. So, so it would be my suggestion, Dana, that we just um, you do the same thing with Phil and, and find out the other abutter. Who lives out of town, Phil, I think you said?
No, they live there. Oh, there's a house right next.
There's a house there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's gonna be the two on uh, Phil's street and then there's gonna be the one right down on the main street, that's the uh, closer side to uh, the road that actually exists uh, for these abutters. And then there's also an abutter that's on the paper road, uh, in addition. And I think that a butter in the paper road is the one that Phil was mentioning might have not been in town.
Hmm, so what I'm going to do on this one is send the paperwork to the planning board to merge the lot that needs to be merged. After that happens, I will put out a bid package to the abutters using the same formula that you explained in the previous conversation.
And, and also to Phil.
Oh, Phil isn't a butter, so he would get it, yeah.
Oh, good.
He wouldn't let me forget it, I'm sure.
No, no.
Okay, everybody in agreement on that?
Yeah, with the same formula we just discussed.
Sounds reasonable.
Yep.
Okay, good enough, Phil?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um. Okay, code inspector, life safety inspector. Um, so Russ has been working away on this thing. And um, Dana got our, our contract. Um, the way that we've written out the job descriptions on, you got that to John?
We have, we have vetted that through the attorney. Um, he did not see any problems with the contract as the way it was drawn up.
And that was prior to today's edits, correct? Or did today's edits make it to him?
Uh, that was prior to today's edits. I haven't seen today's edits yet. Um, so depending on what they are, um, I can certainly send it to him again.
Um, Russ, did they make it into SharePoint?
So yes, there are edits in the SharePoint. I highlighted what was changed.
Okay.
And then I did some cleaning up with the blue and then, so that the language was a little bit better. There's a bit, few repetitive things and sentences that weren't grammatically correct that I fixed.
Good. Um, so when, when we were making those, those little edits this afternoon, there was nothing um, there's nothing that we changed that would have affected much of anything, was really just wording.
I suspect it wouldn't affect it.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
It was not substantive.
Right. So. Um, we can take a moment, Dave and Dee, if you'd like, and look at the changes just so that you are assured that there was nothing substantive that John didn't see. Um.
The last one in yellow, I remember that we had uh, removed works with for some of the stuff and it appears all of it's been put into one place again uh, and still ha, and has works with again, so.
Where are you, Dave?
Uh, I'm looking at the draft in the yellow portions. It says works with all town boards, commissions, committees and employees.
Draft of.
The last, the last bullet.
The, you mean that, under the code life safety inspector position description?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, typical duty is the last bullet point. Um, I'm wondering, what was that to start with?
Um, it was awkwardly phrased.
Don't see a versioning here.
Oh. Um, I think it said works with all town boards, committees. And there was a bunch of ands. There were three ands and there was one something else and it got reduced to one and and one as. So really, it was just wording.
Previous one.
What do the ones in blue mean? Russ?
I am muted, okay. So the ones in blue, I made one that was two bullet, one bullet into two bullets because it was a run-on sentence, so I fixed it. And then the other one, it had three ands for the one where you see it says assist the select board in enforcement of zoning ordinance subdivision driveway regulations and site plan regulations was what it originally said and I changed it to assist the select board in enforcement of zoning subdivision driveway and site plan regulations, just a lot cleaner. And then this, these two were combined and I changed it to pairs, written reports of compliance issues and success enforcement actions. So it just requires the code inspector to submit everything in writing, so the board can have it for the records. And then this one I added, which was follows up on enforcement's actions taken by the select board to ensure compliance, cuz I think you're probably gonna want them to do backup inspections after you make decisions.
Mm-hmm.
So those were the quick changes I made there.
But is that, Russ, excuse me, that follows up on enforcement actions, blah, 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 is that a new sentence?
So that would be a new tense sentence, but we can take it out if you don't want it there.
Well, if it's a new sentence, it, it could be something that maybe if Dana thinks John ought to see. Um, I think it's a good idea, what you've written there, but if there was, if there was nothing like that in what John saw.
Well, there is, because there's one for the planning board, so it follows up with the planning boards from before.
Okay.
So there is similar. So there is similar stuff in there.
Okay.
I'm trying to find that maybe instead of ma- making the extra sentence, we can just add select board with planning board.
That makes sense.
Because then it's one last thing and it's easier. And then the that yellow item, since you seem to have the versions that I'm not able to see, what was that previously?
I am trying to get what I sent to Dana. Because I believe the only change was adding commissions. And I changed it from. There's the old one. So that one was. Works with town boards, committees, departments, and employees as needed. And we changed simplified it to works with. All. Works with all town boards, commissions, committees, and employees as needed. So it's the same thing, just added commissions because commissions was left out.
And remove departments, because we don't have.
Because we don't have departments.
Okay.
And then up under position description, Russ.
Yep.
In that same document, you've got this thing parts highlighted in yellow.
Right, I can read the old one if you want to hear the old one.
Yeah.
Because that one made no sense. The C I show. Read and interpret blueprints, construction plans, and other documents, and be able to perform inspections of construction. And building sites and exercise independent judgment and discretion. That was all one sentence. And now we've changed it to two sentences. The C L shall perform inspections of construction and building sites using independent judgment and discretion. The inspector shall be able to read and interpret blueprints, construction plans, and determine potential impacts on wetlands. So the wetlands is the new part that Chris wanted to have added, which is covers in the top part for the code inspector. With at with wetlands in that one as well. So I can highlight that. So that was a change. So it was gonna be in conjunction with this.
So Dana, the things that you sent to John were the. The job description, right? The position description.
The job description, the contract. And some questions that we had that he answered.
Okay. And so the 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 agreement and contract. Uh, those those things in red are things that. Were added post John or pre John?
I didn't add any, I didn't add anything in red.
I didn't add anything in red either. I'm not sure.
I'm still looking at the the description.
Oh, the red stuff, that wasn't edited. That's stuff that needs to be filled in when I get the information.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know what date we're doing the contract. I don't know Tom's address if we were to hire Tom.
No, I know, but under insurance, for example.
We were gonna contact Primex to ask them what the suggested insurance amount should.
Okay, okay.
And I think Dana did that last week. We still haven't gotten an answer.
Yeah.
Now underneath number two, Russ. Inspection services. If you go down to G on that. Are you there?
I am.
So in the second line there, it says description, description singed on date whatever.
Signed on.
Yeah, that that would be better.
So I will, I will fix that.
I like the singe, yeah.
I like singe.
Well, we'll just light it on fire, and that's the one we're gonna use.
So in the job description, the position description. With that first yellow section with the inspector shall be able to read and interpret blueprints, construction plans. And determine potential impacts on wetlands. Wouldn't it make more sense to have that be the technical way of doing it? Which would be more like the inspector shall be able to read and interpret blueprints, construction plans. And wetland delineations.
No, we don't want him delineating wetlands.
No, no, no. What they are, not do the delineation.
Well, I guess you can say that, but the one of the main reasons why the conservation commission and the planning board are so interested. In this is to send him out. You know, to to have some work, some eyeballs on the, not only the blueprints. But also the the site. So that the the code enforcement officer or code inspector can can see how the plans. Could potentially impact the wetlands. And that's, that's a little bit different than what you're suggesting.
Fair, but wouldn't it be important for him to be able to read the wetlands delineations to know where the wetlands. Are listed as being and so on and so forth. Like, that seems like the technical way that that should be worded. Because this is about technical characteristics.
Well, isn't determining an impact on a wetland the same thing?
That sounds like you want him to go become a wetland scientist as opposed to.
No, that's why I don't like, that's why I don't like the use of the word delineation. Because wetland scientists delineate wetlands.
Well, so that's why I was saying that he should be able to read a wetlands delineation, not go perform a wetland.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, yes, I mean, I.
Because it's all read and interpret blueprints, not go create them, read and interpret construction plans, not go create them.
Exactly, and so determine potential impacts on wetlands would be the same thing. I don't, I don't see there's any. Betsy, do you? Are you still there?
She does not appear to be. I think I saw Roy kind of moving a hand. Were you wanting to say something?
Oh, Roy, no, okay.
I think it sounds all right the way it is, to tell you the truth.
See, I think that the way that this is worded with and determine potential impacts on wetlands. Sounds much more like, hey, we're asking him to go find and delineate wetlands.
Um, well, if he's reviewing paper. You know, he's he's. He's performing inspections, and then he's reading and interpreting blueprints and construction plans. And so there's, there's no way if he's, if he's reading and interpreting blueprints and plans. That he's delineating wetlands.
Right. Well, so. That that's my point is that we should be really clear, because if it's all read and interpret. Then it's read and interpret blueprints, read and interpret construction plans, read and interpret.
Potential impacts on wetlands. So get the determine. So you're saying being able to read and interpret blueprints. And construction plans and potential impacts on wetlands.
No, 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 we need, no, 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 English major time. We, if we're, if we're reading and interpreting, then we need another verb there. Like determine or something else, you know.
So what would he read and interpret that would be? Like the equivalent of a wetlands report.
Okay, so um, in the in the wetlands report that we saw today that Mark Moser showed us. He would be able to look at that map. And, well, I mean, in in that particular instance.
Right, well, I'm asking, what would we, what would that be called? That that wet, that wetlands report. Now, I was under the assumption that it would always be considered a wetland delineation when it was showing where wetlands are. Is that not a correct assumption?
Well, uh, wetlands get delineated to show where they are.
Right.
So some other scientist has gone out in the field and delineated those wetlands.
Right, so would he read and interpret the delineation?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So wouldn't he read and interpret the delineation? Like the wetlands delineation, where he's not going to do the delineation. He's gonna read and interpret the the map and the results of the.
No, he's going to look at how the construction potentially impacts the wetland.
So wouldn't he need to be able to read and and interpret the delineation to show that?
He would need to understand how to do that. And that's part of the the education that he's gonna need to be able to do a determination of potential impacts on wetlands. So his skill set is gonna have to be, to be able to to understand what he's looking at on the ground. And this, this.
So you're wanting it to be looking at it on the ground, not looking at a wetlands report.
He would already have gone out, Dave, to the site and looked at where those wetlands are. So that when he's looking at blueprints and construction plans, he he can, he is. He's educated himself in advance as to how those are going to be. He, you know, how those may impact the wetlands.
So who is then determining those wetlands?
The environmental scientist.
Okay, so he would be reading a map that shows the delineated wetlands and comparing it to another map. So. So shouldn't this, instead of determining impacts on wetlands, shouldn't this be? Uh, read and interpret the.
Potential impact on wet.
Wetland maps or something of that nature.
Um, I I don't understand what you're getting at. I'm so confused.
The way this reads is that you want him to go out, find the wetlands and determine where they are and what's gonna impact them. Versus having a wetland scientist or a wetlands map or somebody else that delineated it.
No, that doesn't say any of that. It's, you know, when somebody comes with a a building permit, there's usually been a wetland scientist out there. That has already done that delineation. And 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 so, you know, no, I I'm not suggesting that he do that at all.
So how how else might we word this then to make that not sound like it is?
Well, it it sounds like it is because it should be what it is. We wanna know as a town how this construction is gonna impact the wetlands.
But wouldn't we know that already from the wetland scientists pointing out where it is?
Um, the wetland scientist is not a construction. And as our building inspector, you know, he he would be the person to to be able to say. You know, he knows how much ground is gonna be disturbed, and he knows about runoff, and he knows about all sorts of things.
Okay, so you're try, so you're trying to look at only how he's comparing it to what's already a deline. So what someone else has delineated as a wetland. Okay, so let me see here. Determine potential impacts on. Would it not make sense then to just say and determine potential impacts on delineated wetlands?
If you want it. If you want to put the word delineated in there, that's fine. Would that solve the problem for you?
I think that makes sense, because then it's saying that it would already be a delineated wetland instead of. He's gonna try to find and determine wetlands.
Uh, but on the other hand, on the other hand, though, I wouldn't want to restrict him. To going on a prop, only on properties where the wetlands have already been delineated. Because he is going to have training in being able to cite a wetland. And sometimes, sometimes they're really hard to figure out, especially things like vernal pool.
All the more reason that wouldn't you want it to be delineated? Instead of having him point something out.
Those things ultimately will be delineated. Um, but but they're not always delineated when we get construction. Usually they are.
So so I wanna, I wanna clarify a little bit. This is the ju, this is the description of what he's. Able to do, what he's wanting or going to be doing, needs to be capable of doing. Not necessarily the process, and so he needs to make sure that he can. Read and determine the impacts based on delineated wetlands. That's actually a really important job function to be able to do it correctly. Corresponding with something that's already done in wetlands mapping alongside. A building permit, zoning, et cetera. Whereas. Spotting a wetland that has not been delineated, as you've mentioned, there's lots of pitfalls there. We don't want this to become a. I saw some water, but I I thought it was fine, so I didn't get somebody involved. Or I saw some water and I thought it wasn't fine, so we prevented something that really should have been fine. Because it had rained and and it wasn't actually a vernal pool or anything like that. Um, so. I I I'm trying to avoid the, I'm trying to avoid putting in here the expectation that. He will be able to just go find and delineate wetlands, because I think that's gonna be bad for everybody on both sides of the conservation argument.
It's not his job.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to clarify here.
Well, it's not even his job, so. You know, he he should be able to recognize. Most wetlands, most wetlands have water most of the time. In the winter time, it's tougher, and during a drought, it's tougher. But we're interested in buffers and setbacks from wetlands, you know, the kinds of things that. That you witnessed tonight on on this thing on Frost Lane that. The state allows, but that usually this the state wants stricter laws on. And so, um, you know, if you've got a river there, that's pretty darn obvious. But if it's a, you know, if it's a stream or a vernal pool, not quite as obvious. He'll have some training in identifying what may, what may most likely be a potential wetland issue. And that's what we want. We want eyes on the ground to prevent the problems before they begin. So potential impacts on wetlands. And it doesn't, it doesn't really matter in the long run if they're delineated or not. He's not gonna be delineating. So if he sees a possible wetland or wetland issue. His responsibility is to come to the select board and the conservation commission. And let that be known so that we can get out there and do something about it.
So to clarify on that, the conservation commission can't go do something about it because they're not the.
No, I know.
That particular.
I know, but it makes us more knowledgeable in signing off.
Yes, absolutely.
But that's, that's all I'm saying.
I think it sounds all right like that, really.
I think you're beating this horse to a pulp.
Well, when you start dealing with legalese, it's important to get the wording right. And that's, that's why I've been trying to make sure that we, we don't. We don't take. Additional ire from anybody for something that he's not actually going to do based on the way that it may read. Uh, or have a legal problem later with somebody suggesting that he should be doing this. It's part of his job description, and he didn't. And those are all legal things that we don't really want to have a problem with later on and having to involve counsel with. So that's why I'm trying to be particular about it and make sure it's as clear as possible.
Well, maybe what you ought to do is send this back to John then. And because the the wording is slightly different, we thought, Russ and I thought it was clearer.
I think the majority of that is clear. It's only the way that the wetlands are tied in.
How about taking determine and put, um. Now I forgot the word I was gonna put in there. Oh, God. Sorry, spaced it. You said something. I was thinking about it. Identify potential impacts on wetlands instead of determine.
Six of one and half a dozen of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I I think it's the the same thing where. Yeah, I I think it's the the same thing where at that point, it's, you know, if someone is conservation minded and they say he didn't it find or determine a particular wetland that they notice, then that can be a grounds for saying, well, he's supposed to know this, that is his job, we're we're putting in a suit. Uh, at the same time, it can also be from the opposite side of, well, he was out here to look, he has that training and he didn't see anything. So no, you can't do anything. And so it's it's weird legal issue. And that's what I want to avoid because I don't want the town to have to have lots and lots of legal funding in order to figure this out in the future.
So do you? Would you feel more comfortable sending this to the lawyer?
I I think that might make sense with the the question of how should this be phrased? Along with what we're actually hoping that um he does.
Along with how we're actually, what?
What we're actually hoping that Tom Bay is going to do once he has his training. Because a- again, it's, it's the how do, how do we word this? Because, yeah, we expect him to go do these things, look at these things, notice uh wetlands and then let us know if they're going to be a problem so that someone can then go do the actual wetland scientist and have it delineated and so on. But we don't want the problem of, well, that's his job and he said it was fine, or that's his job and he didn't find it. Um, it because then you have the whole lawsuit problem and could, we don't want to deal with that.
Well, I don't know what to say to that because anything could happen at any time to anybody doing any job for this town, as we have seen in the last six months. And so, um, you know, I I don't think that you will ever come to a decision if you're worried about whatever on earth could happen out there. I understand being cautious about, you know, and that's why, you know, I'm fine with John taking another look at this. I would want to approve this tonight, conditional upon John's approval of it. Because I don't want to leave this select board and I won't until, until this code enforcement officer thing is approved. So, um, you know.
Look, go ahead. Sorry, sorry, Chris. So why don't we do that with with the conditional that the the attorney um, look it over, like you were saying? I would go for that.
Okay, yeah, that the attorney looks at the the language and the 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 concerns that we have for the wording.
Right.
And why? And then either says, no, it's fine, or gives us better wording.
And then, just to be clear, since you're the person that has the concerns, why don't you write it out? Write, write your concerns out so that John can narrowly focus on precisely what you're talking about there.
Sure, absolutely.
If everything else is okay, I mean, and we're just worried about that wording, that's what I would do. We can vote on it with the condition that he um look at it over and whatever.
Okay, so I would move that we accept the position description for code life safety inspector uh contingent upon legal review. And the questions regarding legality and liability surrounding the determining potential impacts on wetlands.
All right, I'm second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's the position description, but now we have other work to do because there's also the um inspection, the ins, the agreement and contract for inspection services. So we need to take a look at that. Dee, do you have a copy of that?
Well, no, I don't have a copy of that. What are we talking about? Now, we, the, is that his contract?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the super, no, supervision, yeah, works under the direction of the town administrator, that one?
Do you want me to put it on screen?
Yeah. Nope, I don't have that one.
Now, the language for this, Russ, where did you find that? Russ?
You're muted, Russ.
So I found a template for an inspector contract and then adjusted it to fit more to what we were asking for. And that's why we submitted it to town council to make sure that the language changes were appropriate and that they would work.
And they said, okay?
He did say, okay, minus the typo that Chris found. We'll fix that.
And so that, and then it's the basically you've got to fill in the address, but it's going to be for three years, right? You're pointing for three years, okay.
And that was supposed to be signed on date, so I put places for everybody to sign on it, including Tom. This part's the other part that's a little tricky is I'm not sure how much insurance he needs. But I base the insurance mounts, I think on Emmett's contract, I use some other ones because that's what I could find. And.
Tom may already carry insurance.
Likely.
But those are the required amounts, but that's why we're asking Primex because he might be different than what we normally ask more, less or more.
Time those a low, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then this part was just needs to be filled in because I don't know what they are.
So when do we expect to have these amounts back from Prime and Primex's suggestions or?
No, Russ, go down again. Stop there, stop.
I expect to hear from them. Uh, maybe I have heard from them, but of course I wasn't there today to get an email, but I would say no more than a day or two.
Um, Russ, this spelling of addresses remarkable.
That was just a placeholder.
He knows, I was gonna say, he knows, he knows what it means.
To make it be read so that we know we have to actually.
He's trying to accentuate it.
Yeah, right.
I was just quickly, so this contract's formatting is really difficult to deal with, the way it's put structured, so if I make little changes and I leave blank spots, everything rearranges on the page. Whatever it was, just to hold it where it was. But it looks nice.
Yeah.
I think it's good.
Was there anything else we want to look at in the specifics of the contract?
I'm, I'm all set with this part.
No, it's okay.
All right, so we're all good with it. I'll stop sharing then.
Yeah.
And then that's that, and then there was.
Wasn't there um a response from council saying that we should have longer? Oh, no, sorry, that was the the reimbursement thing, never mind.
Yeah.
I was thinking of the number of days because we've got, you know, X number of business days turnarounds and stuff like that in this contract too.
Though I think the only other issue are the fees. But that, that shouldn't be some, perhaps what we should do first is vote to accept contract. Uh, well, the insurance part, maybe we want to hold off on. Maybe because of the insurance part, maybe we want to hold off on that.
Yeah, because that could change a fair amount of things, not just auto insurance.
Right. So we can wait. And then the fees part of it, um, I think we know that we need to to update our fees. And so that's, maybe you guys can have a a work session on that or maybe, I don't know.
Yep. And there was a a good, um, a good comment in the uh legal response there that it is, uh, let's see. Authorizes to municipality to quote, establish fees to defray the cost of administration, implementation and enforcement of state build code and any local amendments. Um, so, yeah, we should be able to absolutely set up fees that will completely offset all of the costs of this. Which of course means that the fees are likely to to change in price, but. Sounds.
Talk specifically about fees, which is why he put that in.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Dana?
I said John and I had spoken specifically on fees because we know our fees are, need to be addressed.
Yeah, okay, yes, definitely.
So, yeah, I think we should definitely uh sit down and look at all of the fees and try to figure out what is going to be covered and what needs to be covered. And then, of course, you're going to need a little bit on top of that for, for example, if he has to go back or if when he's going out to address a complaint as opposed to something that's from a filed uh petition, and since it's supposed to be able to offset all of that, I think uh that'll be a good way for us to start looking at it.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
So what is the, um, what is the next step, Dana? Assuming that John Rattigan takes a look at it, addresses Dave's concerns.
Well, the fees, I mean, you can work on that. I mean, that's, this is the contract between the uh um, vendor, I guess, for lack of a better word, um, and the town. Um, and then there is a procedure to um change fees, which of course we'll follow. So, did I answer your question on?
No, what I'm trying to ask is, how do we, how do we officially hire Tom in this additional capacity?
Well, I think that he needs to be brought in and agree to sign this contract and the board needs to agree to accept the contract and ratify it and he is hired. Provided he's the one you want, which I think you're saying yes.
I certainly want him.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you can always change, change the fees, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that if he were to say, and and I don't think he's going to say this because we've had this conversation with him um, more than once, um, that he is going to agree, I don't see anything in that contract that he would object to. But we all do, we need to keep in mind that we may run across something.
So I guess once we get the numbers back from Primex and their uh response to it, then we can finalize the contract and then we can move forward to sign it with him.
Would you be interested in um accepting the contract with going with the recommendation from Primex as far as the insurance?
Are we only asking them about the auto insurance or did we ask them about others or if there were other clauses they thought needed to change?
I need to review that auto insurance because I think you need to review um the other issues, liability as well. With that, um, but I hate to hold, have you hold up on the contract waiting for Primex.
Have you actually asked Tom what kind of insurance he, he has as life safety and health inspector?
I have not. Have you, Russ?
I have not, so something we've talked about.
Might be worthwhile to take a look at that.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we get ahold of him, Russ, tomorrow and make an appointment with him?
I can do that.
Sounds good.
Did you want to hold the contract to the next meeting?
It kind of sounds like we have to.
Either that, have a special meeting some night, as soon as we know about everything.
Well, I want to make sure it gets done. I mean, I, I know that we're part, part of the way there, but I, you know, it just seems like paperwork stuff to hold up to to go to find out about.
Unfortunately, that is the way the government works. Or doesn't, depending on your view.
Yeah, maybe we can have a really brief special meeting.
That would be a good, that fun game for that.
Just have one thing on it. You know, and we can do that maybe, you know, the week, the week of town meeting.
So then we'd have something to bring to town meeting too, if we we hire, if he accepts the employment and we hire him.
Yeah, that'd be great. Does that sound all right?
That sounds reasonable. Um, so Dana, Russ, let us know as soon as they get back to us and then we can schedule the meeting.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
We only need what, uh, put it on uh public, public size at what, two days in advance or something like that, 24 hours or?
24 hours for special, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So it'll be the week of the 12th.
Yeah.
Next week, yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. Um, reimbursement agreement. Okay, so here's the, here's the now, he he looked at our reimbursement agreement too, right?
Yes, he did. And he had one suggestion to change the amount of time that the town had to submit bills to um Hopkinton Solar.
10 days instead of five, is that?
Yes, yeah.
Those are business days, correct?
They are business days.
Yes. Which sounds reasonable.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I we don't necessarily know exactly uh how quickly we'll get a bill from legal, but I can't imagine they're gonna want to wait to give us a bill.
Yeah, well, I think what he was saying was, and I don't think he saw a huge problem with it because basically what this is saying is when we get a bill, we submit it immediately to um for reimbursement, even before we pay it perhaps. Which of course we will, but I think he just wanted to give us some wiggle room um on that.
Okay.
Kind of a side question on this, how does this work with our budgeting and revenue? Uh, since this is a reimbursement, do we actually, like, is this going to actually cause a problem for us?
No, we're going to put it into revenue and it's the gross budgeting law that will be following, so um, it will show as an expense and it will show as a revenue.
So that'll make it look like we're probably overspending legal budget.
You would need to explain the offset, yes.
Okay.
Okay, now, is there a, is there a contract then that that we need to sign?
This agreement is what we're looking, will be looking for you to sign. Um, and I think there's one signature at the bottom, so if you'd like to point someone to sign it and I'll send the rest it over to um, Mr. LaBelle at at Hopkinton Solar for his signature.
Okay. So, I make that one of my last things that I sign. I'll come in tomorrow and do it.
Okay.
Um, and then the environmental consultant agreement, he had a couple of things to say on that.
He asked to remove a paragraph from that and the paragraph related to the um confidentiality of the documents and work that he was doing, which um he had a problem with that because of course, once it goes to the select board, it's not confidential, it's public information. Um, I spoke with Rick Vanderpoel about it and he was perfectly fine for us to remove it, so I removed it.
And that was it?
That was it.
Okay. Okay, so, um, there's, so I can get that signed as well tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, on White Plains Road Bridge, do you have anything?
Well, you know, I, I, in a way, I hate to put that in because it's always the same story, but I did speak with Aaron this past week. Um, she has, tells me that she has gotten agreements for, from two of the abutters that we need easements for, for the work. Um, she is working on the third, and I guess, and I haven't spoken with Emmett yet about the fourth, it's somebody that he's very familiar with. Um, I have done what we've done time more than once and say, we need this done. Um, we need to get the application to DES, we want it done this summer. Um, any suggestions? I'll be glad to hear, but, um, it did sound like Aaron had done a few things on it, which I was pleased about.
Can you tell me which of butters have signed? Do you know?
They, well, that's the issue. They have not, they've agreed to sign, but they have not signed as yet, and I, I can tell you, but I don't have the names in front of me now.
Okay.
One of the abutters that she hasn't spoken to yet is Mr. Borak.
Well, I've spoken to him.
Have you? Okay.
Yes, and he's absolutely fine with whatever needs to be done.
Well, I will tell her that tomorrow.
Maybe he's a, a number three.
Um, and then one that, there's the other one is the Boston Home, which, um, I do know is, there's a sale going on there, so we'll work through that.
Okay.
So they must have, Mr. Sullivan must have signed, I would say, I would assume, the Sullivan's.
Yeah, I, I think no one has actually signed, they've agreed to sign.
Oh, okay.
So I need to get from Aaron the easement deed, so that we can get them signed and get them recorded. And that we need to have in place so that she can send the application to, um, New Hampshire DES for the permit.
So we get them to sign it, or is she going out there? I think we'd be faster if we get them to sign it.
Well, I guess the schematics, I certainly will work with Aaron, but she's going to have to be the one to explain it, so if she's, you know, if she's got it, um, I'll be glad to work with her just to make sure we get them done. She also told me we should order the culvert, but I'm hesitant to do that until I see something moving.
Yeah, as much as, like, the now is the time to do that, we, we shouldn't order something until DES is telling us, yeah, you're actually allowed to do that.
That's what I thought. I thought maybe a big culvert on the front lawn of the town office might not go over well. Anyway, that's, that's the story, we're, you know, on White Plains Road Bridge, we're, I'm trying to push that along.
Is there anything we can do to help make that go faster?
Um, well, I think certainly a telephone call to Aaron to encourage her to make it go faster is always helpful. And she's been very cooperative with me, I, I'm not saying that. But I know it's been a project that's been going on quite a while.
Are you, you're making the telephone call, or are we making the telephone call?
I, I guess I'm saying, Dave asked me if, if it was something the board can do, and I guess all I can think of right now, I mean, other than talking to abutters that you might know, um, is to encourage Aaron to to continue doing what she needs to do.
She just seems to be so slow.
So slow. Dave, have you ever spoken with her on the phone?
No.
Why don't you introduce yourself? I mean, you've, you've met her, um, but why don't you give her a call if you have the time to do it? Because you're going to be, you know, carrying through on this with Dana and Dee, and, um, you know, put, put a little urgency in this. It's very hard to move along sometimes, so.
Yep. Um, so I think that makes sense, uh, and I will at some point this week, stop in and talk with Dana more and get the number and go call her. Um, probably from Town Hall because my number shows up funny to people. Um, and Chris, since you said that you already spoken with Borak, maybe you want to call her too, uh, sooner to tell her, hey, I already got sign off from this guy.
Just did that. I just emailed her.
Okay. All right. So hopefully with all of that, we can actually have something to report next time.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Unbelievable. Um, and then Town Hall Maintenance Update, where are we?
I had hoped, yeah, I had hoped to have a little more on that. Um, my, my gutter guy has not shown up yet, so I'm getting a little nervous about that. So I'll have to, um, see if, uh, what's going on with that. Uh, I also need, have wanted to talk to the fire department about the emergency lighting, and I have not had a chance to do that yet, so. Yeah.
You'll follow up.
I will.
Um, Dave had said last time that he thought that it would be best to deal with all of this, all of this, um, sort of updating Town Hall as, what were you suggesting is one project, Dave?
In what?
The lighting, the gutters, the.
Oh, so my, I think my comment was, and, and, you know, we can go back, but I think my comment was about all of the lights, and then it would make sense to do the lights as a single project, uh, and updating all of them to current LED style lights, because then we can use impact fees, uh, as a town upgrade to Town Hall, as opposed to the, um, like, if we're replacing old batteries and old units that are just gonna get eaten and, and have problems, that actually costs, it looks like more than a updated LED unit, just to get the old style batteries, because they have to be larger and more powerful to run old lights. Um, and so that would have to be out of normal maintenance budget instead of impact fees. Um, the other thing that may, maybe I said something along those lines of, hey, let's look at this as a package instead of one thing at a time. That might have been for the, uh, front door, the key fobs, and making sure that that entrance is ADA compliant. Because that kind of all makes sense to do at once, so done once instead of four times.
The ADA compliance stuff is huge, so that's gonna mean, oh, you know, a big expenditure of money all around paving and, you know, all the rest of that, so.
I guess my only comment is I don't want to delay the emergency lighting, waiting for the other pieces to fall together.
Right, the, that's why, like, that's a separate project, it's not related to the others, but the, the lights as a whole, like, replacing all of the emergency lighting instead of like, the few that.
Yeah, I understood that. Good, yeah, thanks.
So, shall we move on to the intent to cut? Stuff. We've got three of them, I think, all adding.
Yep. And they were three that were approved last year, two of them were no cuts. And one of them, we cut a little bit, but apparently he has more to cut over there. Um, also, there is a warrant and a certificate to sign. That wasn't on the agenda for a tax bill for, for port of cut. So those are also in the sharepoint.
Okay. Um, so, ah, what are we doing? Intent to cut. Okay, so there were, uh, map lot, map one lot twenty-two. Um, there was, okay, I, I have that there's a, a correction that I would make on, on, oh, no. No, it's, it's not that. It, it's that, that one, I don't have anything to say on that. It's the map three lot fifty-five that I have a question about, but the other two I don't. I think map one lot twenty-two, that's the one that's across from Winter Pocket, and I think that he's already started logging that.
Somebody has.
Well, that's him.
By there today.
Yeah. So, um, I, I don't know the law well enough, um, Russ, to know whether they need to wait for us to sign the intent to cut before they cut.
So.
Go ahead.
So when something like that happens, and I'm made aware of it, I send that to DRA, and DRA takes care of it.
Oh, okay, well.
Uh, also have note, this is for tax years, so April first is where the intent to cuts are. So he could have had an intent to cut and done cutting up until, you know, March thirty-first, stopped, and then waited for this to continue. I don't know if he's active there, you know, today, that might be a problem, uh, but if he hasn't been active since, you know, April first, then there, there's no problem there.
Oh, no, he has been.
Okay.
So, but that was the same lot that he took you all to on Saturday, or whenever it was we were out there? You, you remember you went up through, you went up that hill?
The one we went on to was not active, even when we went up the hill.
But the, oh, then he didn't show you that. So, so he didn't bring you over by, by?
We didn't go over to the active lot that I think is a couple lots over.
I see, okay.
We went, we went up the hill to where the, uh, more prominent wetland was, that wasn't the river.
Okay, alrighty. So then that brings us to map, map three, lot fifty-five. And there is a, um, that's a lot of seventy-five acres, of which I think the intention was to cut twenty-five of those acres, is that right?
That's what it says.
Okay, I'm just looking now, I'm just trying to find it again. Um, there is a stream that bisects that lot. So I personally would not want to okay that until I was sure that proper protections for that stream were gonna happen.
Like what?
Like that, that if he has to cross the stream, that there's a, um, a corduroy road at least built to cross it. Um, or if he's logging, now, I don't know the nature of the stream even. I, I've never been on that property. You can just see it from the tax card. Um, I mean, not the tax card, the, um, the, the mod, the map, the Latin map, map. So.
So they did, um, part of the, the meeting, and we're kind of mixing things a little bit here, but part of the meeting after you left, uh, regarding the best management practices and stuff, um, I actually asked, so what happens, what, how does, how do things get enforced, and, and what are kind of the teeth of things? And they specifically actually brought up, uh, crossing a known, uh, lake channel of, of water, such as a river or brook, uh, is actually a real big problem, and they basically don't allow it except with special requests through DES. Um, and there are multiple levels of how things get, uh, penalized, and any of that typically go, starts with the forest warden, because DES doesn't tend to respond very much.
Right.
Uh, and then when, if the forest warden goes and determines that there's a problem, uh, then he'll get DES and others involved. Um, if it is actually a problem, there is a, uh, exponentially increasing fine set, and then loss of license. So they don't want to work in wetlands, or, uh, go outside of the, uh, best management practices, such as we were handed by the timber operative, uh.
Right, Jason Stoss.
Yes.
So, so then what I would, what I would wonder then is if, if contact could be made with Addie and ask him which portion, when we look at that lot number, three, three dash fifty-five, what portion of that seventy-five acres is going to be logged, and whether he is going to have to cross that stream at all? Because it is a significant stream that goes through there. At a cooch pond, right at a cooch pond, so.
And, uh, for Russ and/or Dana, probably just Russ, um, is, is this a form that we just, uh, accept because it's DRA saying, I have an intent to cut something? Or is this actually a permission form when we sign it?
So it's just a sign. There's only four reasons that it can be denied. The form hasn't been filled out properly. Properly, land is enrolled in the unproductive category of current use. A timber bond is required but has not been posted. All owners of recorded list, or all owners of record on the listed property have not been signed, or have not signed.
So this property is in current use?
Correct, but it's not in the unproductive category.
Oh, okay.
It also is checking for, uh, if the taxes are paid.
Correct, and the taxes are paid.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so, you know, this, I mean, this is an ideal, you know, we can't stop them, but this is a, this is a question that would follow up logically from the meeting that we had with him the other day. Because this, this is a person that says that he will log right up to the edge of a stream, a brook, whatever. Um, a bear, very bad management practice, especially if the stream or brook happens to carry trout. Because everybody knows that trout needs shade. So, um, I, I would, I would just kindly ask that somebody follow through on that. And, and, and ask him if he's going near that brook.
I can give him a phone call.
Okay, good luck. He's a nice guy. He is a nice guy. So, um, no, no.
So, so that's fine, Chris, if you don't feel comfortable, you know, signing it because of what, whatever reason, that's fine, I, I can go sign them. Unless it has to be chair, I don't think it does, though.
You know, you need two of the three boards to sign it, so it needs to be the majority of the board.
Yeah, I wouldn't sign it. I'm not gonna sign that until I know. So if we can find out from Addie, he might be able to tell you straight up, I'm not going anywhere near that, because he's only, he's only doing a third of that lot. So maybe he doesn't need to go anywhere near that.
Does, if he were trying to do more of the lot, would he have to cross the river? Or is the river kind of down the middle where he doesn't need to, and he could access it elsewhere?
No, it goes this way, across a long rectangular lot.
Alright.
Um, so anyway, the, the other two I have no problem with.
Alright. Well, um, Dee, do you have a problem with it? If not, we can just sign it and get it done with.
No, I think I was in the office and I signed it today.
Okay.
Didn't I, didn't I?
You did.
Not one of the ones, yeah.
Yep, those were the three.
Alright, so I will, uh, Dana, do you want to, or, or Russ, do you want to set it up as a DocuSign? And then I'll sign it as soon as I get it, or do you want, do I, should I stop in to sign it?
If, whatever you want, sir, we will accommodate you.
Well, if it's DocuSign, I can make it like, almost as soon as I get it, so.
Okay, very good, we'll do that.
Okay, um, is there any correspondence?
No, I have no correspondence.
Okay, any public comment? Public?
We do have.
Go ahead.
There, I'm unmuted. Uh, you're gonna be getting off the board in another week, Chris. What I'd like to ask the board is, is a new member gonna come on to the salt shed committee? Or is the board going to appoint Chris, is the representative, you know, pro temp, what, however you want to call it, to stay with the group that's trying to work on the salt shed, you know, that, that project down at the safety building?
I think that's a good idea, Roy. I think Chris should stay on if it's, if she's able to or wants to, because she's been into it for so long. We're all, we're close, we're close.
I'm not trying to push you, Chris, or anything like that. You, you've got the knowledge and so forth. Uh, it, it's just my thought process, that's all.
Well, I would very much like to continue doing it. It's important work for me.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, I had a, when, when I found out about the election results, um, I had a conversation with Dana, and I think Russ might have. um, I had a conversation with Dana and I think Russ might have been there as well. But basically making sure that we wouldn't have a legal problem to, to have you there continuing to do that. And, and basically, yeah, you're, you're fine to continue doing that.
Okay, that, that was my public input.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We thought you were sleeping all the time.
No, I, I, my eyes might be closed, but my brain's still working, that's why I got the headphones on.
I'm glad to know that.
Um, and not pictured, but we still have, uh, we've got Wendy, I don't know if she had anything to say, or was just waiting for specific business questions.
No, what's happening, Wendy? Wendy?
She's asleep.
Yeah.
Wendy? Yoohoo!
She's got lots to do tomorrow, so don't wake her up.
Nighty night, Wendy. Um, we have to approve some me, some minutes. We actually have quite a few minutes to approve. And um, accounts payable and payroll manifest. Did you send those out for DocuSign, Dana?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I can't get on, they've
Oh, really?
Expired my DocuSign, they're retiring me early.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Dave, did you get it?
I didn't happen to see them unless it was earlier and I've already signed them. But I, I, normally I see them around to uh
Yeah, usually
A day or two ahead.
I thought I had sent them out on Friday.
Let me check again.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen, I'm leaving.
You also have a motion for trustees, it just didn't make it to the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking for a DocuSign and I don't see one for a while.
Um, actually, it's, it's, it would be in SharePoint. It's not in DocuSign yet, I said DocuSign, but I meant, but I meant the other.
Okay, that makes sense then, yeah, I see them in SharePoint.
Okay, yeah.
Just like I haven't seen it designed yet, so.
Right, no, you haven't.
Let's take a look at the payroll manifest then. So 19, 9. Um, that's a little bit more than normal. Is there something? Well, no, I guess it's not.
I don't think it's that unusual, you've got stipends for the fire department officers and the select board in there.
Right, right. So, okay, well, I would move to approve the um Select Board Payroll Manifest for payday 405, 2021, for pay period 315, 2021 to 328, 2021, in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and accounts payable manifest a little bit further up. And this is another, this must be another school payment.
There is a school payment in there, I thought you'd enjoy that.
Yeah, how are we doing with all of these? Are we, are we still afloat here in April?
Yes, we are.
Good to know.
Yeah, we haven't run aground yet.
That's how I would.
Okay, um, do either of you have any corrections, deletions, comments?
Nope, not me.
Okay, then I would, Dave?
I'm just pondering over the amount that is going to mainstay, but, nope.
So I would move to accept the, the accounts payable check warrant for check date 405, 2021, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and six cents. Period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What else do we need to do? There is all the motions.
There's a motion for the trustees.
Yeah. I moved to request the trustees of trust funds issue check for one thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents to VHB for invoice number 337158-22. These funds to come from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I request the trustees of trust funds issue a check for eight thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and ninety cents to CompuTech Integrators Inc. For purchase of computer equipment for the police department server upgrade. These funds to come from the Technology Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
Who's that? Who seconded it?
Dave.
Dave should, yes. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
That's exciting, actually. Um, and then the minutes, have you all had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
I did look at minutes, I haven't looked at them in a few seconds, or I should say today, but I remember looking through a lot of them before, so.
Okay.
Looks like one or two got updated.
Um, 322, 322, 21. I had only one correction. Um, and it's, it's on, it's, it's almost down at the bottom. Um, it starts, the paragraph starts at Mr. Pearson commented that there may be valuable lumber on the property, do you see that one, Russ?
One second, when I pull it up.
It's on the second, the second page.
Second page, okay.
Sorry, I, I just saw that skinny little line. So it's on the, the second paragraph on the second page, starting Mr. Pearson.
I muted myself to talk, alright, so I see it in red.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, so this value of the timber would likely be higher than the back taxes that were owed?
Correct. There's no B there, so.
Yeah, would likely be higher, that makes sense, okay. Then I didn't have any other comments, you're getting good at this, Russ.
Trial by fire. Pulling it off, sink or swim. It's actually not that bad, now that I'm not intimidated by it.
Good. So um, any other, do, do either of you have any other comments on this?
Nope.
Dave?
Nope.
Okay, so I moved to accept the minutes from March 22nd, 2021, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, and then, um, 3, 3821. Oh my gosh, I can't believe I did. 3821, there was one. Let's see, where is that? 3, there it is, 3821. And I think whatever comment I had, I think I put that in red as well. So it's not a big deal, it's on the second or third page down, it's down toward the end.
Yeah, it looked like it was spelling something.
Yep, that's all.
Yep.
So it's just performed.
I just must have typed out it, alright.
So, good job again. So are you guys okay with this?
Yes.
Dave? Okay, I moved to accept the minutes from March 8th, 2021, as amended, as corrected.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the minutes from March 1st, I thought were fine.
Whoa.
Hang on, I need to read these, I, I gotta try and find something.
Aw, man, come on!
I'm sorry, we're gonna have to move this period to.
Tried so hard.
That's funny. So. Um, do, do either of you have anything to say about those minutes?
Nope.
Dave?
He's looking.
Just double checking.
Oh my gosh, he's after you, Russell.
It's alright, I'm a glutton for punishment.
He's gonna hound you to eternity.
You must have forgotten the period somewhere.
Or comma.
I mean, that's, there, there are some fonts that are
I don't know how that happened, but.
But no, no, so it's all good.
Oh!
It's true, good job, Russ. So I, I moved to accept the minutes for March 8th, 2021. Is that correct?
I thought this was the first.
I'm sorry, March 1st, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I let you do that.
I looked to see if you were gonna do it and then decided, okay, she's not.
No, I was waiting for you. I wanna be a hog.
All the way back to January.
Okay, we didn't do this.
Oh, January, that's right, that's been haunting us.
I thought we were gonna do this last time and then somebody had a question about something. And so that's why this one was left over. And I don't remember what that question was.
I don't either, I, I kept reading it and at any rate, I had, I had no issue with these minutes.
What is the reasoning for the section in red?
I did.
Towards the bottom.
Trying to look at what the original one was.
There's no corrections there, I just highlighted it in red.
Cause you like using red or what?
I love using red. I, I find it alarming and it wakes Russ up.
It did.
Right.
I was trying to figure out what.
Oh, I know why I highlighted these, because it had things in it that folks were going to find out. And I wondered if anybody found out about any of those things.
I'm gonna, I'll talk to Fred Regan tomorrow about um, the ADA compliance. Cause I wanna talk to him about the town, um, Paul. Yeah. I'll talk to that.
Okay, that would be great, and then
I'll write that down.
And then Dana, you, I think you were going to you were gonna do something in that first paragraph.
Okay, I'll have to look at it, I don't
Oh, about impact fees. And, and how we could use impact fees.
Oh, I see, it was uh, it was a particular number because it would, the number that we had at the time was a total, not in, not the amount that we could use for each building.
Oh, okay, alright, and obviously part of the impact fees is not ours to use, so.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay, so I just wanted to follow up on that.
Okay, I will uh, I recall that now, I'll figure it out.
I think you might have also found a problem, cause I see Tara's last name in red, I might have typed out it.
Oh, gonna go.
You said I noticed that red, but I
Yeah, good for you, yeah, it's G U N N.
Oh, I forgot, okay.
Yeah. And it might be A G L E. Do you, it might be.
However it's supposed to be spelled, it's also spelled that way up top at the members present, oh, sorry, also present.
That's right.
So.
Yes, it's two N's.
It's two N's?
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
Except after C.
That's hilarious, Dana.
Yeah.
And sometimes why?
Yeah. It's getting late, sorry.
It is getting late. Okay. Anything else? The only other thing I would, um, oh, well, so, so can we, can I move to approve these minutes?
Yes.
Cause I've got one more thing I just wanna report on very, very briefly. Um, so I, I moved to accept the minutes of January 25th, 2021, as corrected, corrected, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the, the only thing that I wanted to add is that the, the salt shed committee actually met today with two engineering firms. And um, we spoke to them about the ex, now it's an expanded, the uh, you know, it's an expanded project that has two phases. Um, the first phase, phase 1A is getting the driveway up and in. And 1B is getting a second entrance exit engineered for below the safety building. Because the, I don't know if Steve's still with us, Steve, are you with us?
He is not.
No.
Ah, um, the police department and the fire department had mentioned that only having one entrance is, poses a, a danger to them. Because if something happens in that one entrance or exit that they have, they're locked in there. Fire trucks can't get out, nobody can get in. And uh, when somebody knocked over the telephone pole recently, the wires were down and nobody could get out or in. So uh, they want a sort of a U shape driveway in and out on the bot, on, in, in that, into the parking lot. So we had the engineers look at that today and they're gonna give us a quote for that. We think it's a very excellent idea that that happened. So that's 1A and 1B, and then 2 is um, 2 is, is to um, is to put better drainage in along the back part of that safety building lot where it has eroded and caused all the damage in that parking area. Remember, we were gonna say that. So, so we thought that as long as we've got engineers on site and as long as we're doing work in that area, that if we folded everything together, that we might be able to get a grant possibly for the safety building part of it. And personally, I, I think that that would be worth trying for. And I would be really willing to work with anybody on trying to get a grant for that.
In, in theory, we're gonna have lots of uh, money going on soon for stimulating uh, our infrastructure. So, that should uh, be something that hopefully we have grants to sign up for.
That's right, exactly, so. Um, anyway, it was, it was a really interesting morning listening to these people come up with different ways of handling the same situation. So they're, within the next two and a half weeks, we're going to get estimates from them. And um, I thi, I think that I, I get a sense who Emmett favors, but I'm not quite at that. Um, but anyway, you know, we'll, we'll meet, once we get those estimates, the subcommittee will meet again and then we'll be in a position to present something to the select board about it.
That's really good, awesome.
I know it's, it's exciting, it's pretty exciting.
So, I, I kind of question have, like, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially asking for the extra information. And slightly cautious that uh, we don't bite off too, more than we can chew with adding the additional things.
Oh, yeah.
In, in the like, or that um, something get rolled into the uh, salt shed or whatever, whatever it's actually called, uh, funds uh, that gets paid out, cause I don't want us to get uh, in trouble with DRA later on. But yeah, I think that all makes sense, I always wondered why they didn't have both an entrance and an exit. Especially being volunteer, everybody's rushing in at the same time the big vehicles are rushing out as fast as possible, so.
So, so actually, the fund is called the Highway and So, so actually, the fund is called the Highway and Land Fund?
Yes, okay, thank you.
So I think that it could be, you know, I think we wouldn't get in D R A trouble. But the point about, you know, this is gonna cost, this is gonna cost time. It's gonna be, you know, to get the money together for this, so, um. Anyway, I just wanted to bring you up to date, so.
Great.
Okay. Okay, I think we're, I think we're done for tonight. Am I right on that?
I think so.
Were you gonna approve the minutes of February twenty-second, the non-public minutes?
Oh dear.
Oh, I missed that.
I completely missed that. O N P is non-public.
It's, it's, uh, Russ's code. It took me a minute to get it, but I got it.
Oh, man. Found me out.
I figured it didn't stand for non-perel or something.
Something good.
The non-public.
Oh, this was about the contract.
Yeah. Okay.
Seems accurate enough.
Okay, then, Dave, are you okay with this?
Yep.
Okay, then I would move to accept the minutes for the Select Board NonPublic. Meeting from February twenty-second, twenty-two-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's, this is my last Select Board meeting. Oh, no, not really.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a special meeting.
It's your last normal Select Board meeting.
That's right, it is, it is.
Your real last meeting is town meetings, so.
Never seen a normal meeting.
Okay, so you'll, um, somebody's gonna contact somebody. Russ is gonna contact somebody, I think. It's always.
I'm gonna be work with Mark to get the stuff for the floods. Also, I forgot, because these came in afterwards, we have two veterans' taxes credits to sign. They submitted all their paperwork before April fifteenth. It's all set. They just need to be signed. So I don't know if Dana can put that in DocuSign. Just wanted to let you know that.
You could put it in on the nineteenth as well, for that meeting.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I mean.
Sign before the fifteenth?
No.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure they got in.
They have to, they have to apply before the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're just veterans' credits that we, well.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna be putting the forms up to be signed. They've submitted all their proof and I have to mail it back to them.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to adjourn this meeting at nine twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, she can have it. She can have it.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night.
Night, everybody.